Like to call a meeting order, please. Roll call.
Councilmember Power here. Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Proton Pogencourt.
Here.
And Mayor Davies.
Here.
Everyone is present. Thank you.
If we could have everybody stand. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Kyle Phillips from, I'm sorry, Pastor Kyle Phillips from the Grace Fellowship Church.
Let's bow our hearts and heads together. Lord, we thank you for the blessings of the day, for the challenges of the day. Lord, we thank you for the freedom and the responsibility to, Lord, to order this fair community. And I just pray that you would, Lord, be present, that we might conduct these affairs, Lord, according to what is good and right in your eyes. We ask in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. If we could all still stand, please. Phil, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll turn the time over to our community engagement reports. Maya?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today I bring to you our Tatchee's Extraordinary Women Recognition. As was introduced in early February, we're hosting this recognition to honor five recipients, and they will be honored tonight. So after considering nearly seventy nominations, one star panel consisting of Councilmember Jeanette Power, Community Engagement Manager Key Budge, and myself, the nominations of these five women stuck out to us as individuals who support and contribute to keeping the city of Tatchee thriving day in and day out. So at this time, I would like to ask each individual, when their name is called, to stand so people know who you are. Just wanted to take a moment to read a quick excerpt from the nominations about each individual. So first, we'll start with Dixie Kuntont. It's one of its lines. So Dixie takes on the responsibility of preserving and showcasing the town's rich railroad history as the curator for the Tatchee Train Museum. She serves as the second vice president of the Tatchee Heritage League, further solidifying her commitment to preserving the town's cultural legacy. Dixie is also an active member of the Ottoman Society, the Tatchee Valley Gym and Mineral Society, a volunteer with the Tatchee Community Theater Association, and a leader of the line dance program at the Senior Center. Dana Wells and Joan Code add that her commitment to preserving local heritage, fostering community engagement, and supporting various organizations demonstrates the impact one woman can have on the collective spirit of a town. Next, we have Lindsay Villapondo. Lindsay is a Realtor at Miramar International and was recently awarded the top listing and selling agent at the Miramar Tatchee office. Lindsay serves on committees for the Tatchee Area Association of Realtors and supports the Tatchee Mountain Associ- sorry, the Tatchee Mountain Rodeo Association and the Tatchee Mountain Bike Team. She volunteers at her church, at her children's schools, and various community events. Brittany, who is one of several people who nominated Lindsay, says, "Lindsay is an inspiration to others by putting her mind to something and achieving. She is always offering help and guidance to women aspiring to do the same. She carries herself in a professional manner, always, and is showing women that they can be and achieve anything they set their hearts to do at any age and state in life." Next, we have Teresa Ruth. Teresa is a shift supervisor at Starbucks where she serves as a mentor to many of the younger workers. Catherine McCall nominated Teresa, explaining, "She is an extraordinary woman because she sees the best in everyone and pushes them to their potential. She has the best life advice. She's the hardest working woman I know. She loves her job, and she does her job incredibly well. She is a mother figure to so many. My whole family calls her Mother Teresa. She has been a mom to me and most of my sisters. She has a magnetic, caring, loving energy to her, and she's the best dressed woman I know. She makes me laugh harder than anyone I know. She constantly pushes women. She works with, to their potential, even if they don't see their own potential. She is always so supportive to any woman going through any situation, and she will always offer you her shoulder to cry on." And we have Claudia Baker. Claudia began the Loop newspaper more than twenty years ago as the Hilltop Shopper, which then grew into the biweekly community paper it is today. She is currently on the board of the Greater Tatchee Economic Development Council and has been on the Tatchee Tourism Commission since its inception. She served on the board of the Greater Tatchee Chamber of Commerce and Main Street Tatchee. Projects under Claudia's direction include the Experienced Tatchee Magazine, placemats for several local restaurants, and the Loop digital screens, all platforms for supporting and promoting local events, businesses, and organizations. Pat Davies says Claudia is an extraordinary woman because she leads by example. Quote, "Many of her columnists are women that range in age from their twenties to their nineties. Having been in the publishing business for most of her adult life, Claudia has inspired women of all ages to always be the best version of themselves." And lastly, we have Mary Cunningham. She was not able to make it out this evening but still wanted to share her nomination. Throughout her life, Mary has been involved in a variety of community organizations, including the Tatchee Alliance Club, Cultural Arts Board Member, Horsemen's Association Advisory Council, Environmental Committee Member, and the Tatchee Heritage League. Mary has volunteered as a dozen for fifteen years and has had a major role in designing, developing, and donating her resources to the current Uriah House Museum Garden. Judy Mitchell nominated Mary and said, quote, "Her unwavering dedication to making Tatchee a better place and her contributions to Tatchee have been immeasurable. Her legacy will continue to inspire generations to come." So, and all of these five women represent the various aspects of the wide spectrum of involvement that there is in our community. And we commend you all for your hard work, dedication, and strength of character. So at this time, we ask that the council provide some certificates and recognize these award winners. So all of the four women here today, if you wouldn't mind gathering here, and we'll go by and take some pictures. We would also like to invite Dominique Hyden.
Do I need to speak here?
Good evening. Just really quickly, Dominique Hyden with the Office of Senator Shannon Grove. All the way up the chain of command, I work for women, including Senator Grove, a strong female leader in the state. And I'm so proud to be able to be here to help recognize these amazing women. One thing that I think is particularly cool to be among the first ranks to receive this award is that you're setting the bar, that everybody else will now be joining your ranks as past recipients of this. So congratulations and thank you for all that you've done for our community.
We'll do, get a group shot. Start with Dixie. Dixie?
Dixie?
Dixie, you could come forward.
You didn't do it?
I got to be the first, so I don't know what I'm doing.
Come right on in.
We're gonna put you right here, Dixie. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Ready here in three, two, one.
Oh. Wow.
We're all good?
Yay, are we good?
And your family?
Oh, oh.
Oh, yeah, from Senator Grove.
Holy cow. That's a lot of stuff. Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Decorations.
Oh, wow. And that one too.
I'm gonna have to buy some frames.
Thank you so very much. I go over there? Okay.
Lindsay, and then Dixie. Just if you can stick right there, then we'll get a group shot with everyone together. So next is for Lindsay. And then this one is for Assemblyman Fong.
Oh, wow. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Did you get it?
Sure.
There's plenty of time. Thank you. And make sure Dominique's.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Teresa.
She's one of my students.
She's my reeza.
No, I have the whole family.
How you doing?
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And this is from Assemblyman Fong.
I'm not bossy. I'm aggressively helpful. Pat, come on up and get a picture.
Stephanie, you wanna come up closer?
Where's William? William.
You said Pat, and then this lady stood up right up. Crap, my girl name. Come back here, come back here.
Did you get a picture?
You guys get the photos, you need to practice. You're welcome to come on.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I said I should get my girl.
Oh, absolutely. We'll do that.
I wanna make sure Pat had a photo.
I don't know if I should hug everybody. Should I?
Sure.
Is this where?
Yes.
And this is from Assemblyman Fong.
Fong?
Fong, yes.
Oh, wow. Thank you. Wondered a time. Grove?
Yes. All right. Good job.
I'm happy about Grove and Fong. Thank you.
Let's bring everyone up. Get everyone in one big group. Dixie, Teresa, Lindsay, and then we'll get one for you and for your girls as well. Let's get all of our extraordinary women in the middle.
Yes.
We can all listen to you.
We'll put you in front, Claudia.
I've always been.
Well, you can get on the table in the back.
Small town people talking.
Hey, guys, eyes over, eyes here, follow my hand. Okay, eyes this way. Okay, Jemaya. And we'll work our way over to Marlin and Pat.
Yay.
Great, thank you. Lindsay, you'd like to get your daughters up here?
And my husband.
I'm sorry. Yeah, you too.
Photo time.
To our, to our extraordinary women, we made a request to just have you as a group solo. So don't, please don't leave just yet.
Thank you.
Okay, great. When you just have the extraordinary, the honorees, council will ask you, you guys, you seated, that'd be fantastic. Dixie, Lindsay, Claudia, Teresa, please come on back up.
With our staff?
Yeah, absolutely.
Are we gonna do the hand thing?
Oh, yeah, we'll start with her. Oh, yeah.
Okay, eyes here. Okay, to Marlin. Maya. And Pat. Super. Outstanding. Great job.
I just wanted to add that I appreciate all of you. I've known a lot of you for your service to our community and your families and what you do. I appreciate that. As a member of the City Council and the mayor, it's, well, it's my honor to do that. It's a great, and we're gonna just keep doing this every year. So you guys have led the pack. So congratulations again.
I tell you, it was extremely tough to, to kind of, with Councilmember Powers, Maya, myself, we deliberated for a couple of hours just going over these seventy applications. But when it all came down to the five women that are being honored, truly were fantastic, extraordinary. The mayor, I'm sorry, I know you haven't invited me up yet.
Yeah, glad. Welcome, Mr. Budge.
Thank you. Mayor Davies, council. It's, again, it's a great privilege here, working in the Community Engagement Department, that we get to recognize members of our community. And thanks to Councilmember Joan Pogencourt, who suggested that we take a look at the Tatchee Mountain Branch of the American Association of University Women. The fortieth anniversary they're celebrating this year. And just to give you a little bit of insight, the Tatchee Mountain Branch was founded forty years ago, but the AAUW was created in eighteen eighty-one, when a group of female college graduates wanted to open doors to career advancement for women, as well as encourage more women to pursue higher education. And a part of the things that they do is they do and have a longstanding scholarship program that they do through the high school. So that's one of the things that we definitely want to recognize. The branch promotes equity, personal and professional growth, community leadership, and friendship through their forty-year history here in Tatchee. They originated as part of the Bakersfield Branch forty years ago. They separated and created this branch. And I'd like to invite President Jane Custer, co-vice presidents Phyllis Belcher, Cindy Marble to come forward, Secretary Nettie Barrar, and Lauren Holland, the membership chair, board of directors to come forward, and I would invite the council to come forward to give them recognition. We also have recognition from Senator Grove and Assemblyman Fong as well. Dominique, is there anything you want to do? So this, Joan, from Assemblyman Fong. Ladies, please come forward.
Yes, sure. I'm sticking it out. Does Jane get these?
Okay, we'll start. Photo's right here. Okay, we move to Maya. Work our way to my left, your right. Got him, Pat? Okay. Anyone else need a photo? Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
As we do, this is, March is Women's History Month, and this is one of the reasons that we wanted to take this speech meeting in March as a priority to make these recognitions. Thank you. Thank you, Dixie. Congratulations. Thank you, ladies.
Congratulations.
So at this time, I'd like to have Chief Standridge come to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council. In continuing with recognizing outstanding women in the community, I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize Mary Ann Pachulo for a certificate of appreciation and community partnership with the Tatchee Police Department. Give you a little background. As everybody knows, I've encouraged our officers to be a lot more proactive with traffic enforcement in the community, and we're starting to see the benefit as our traffic collisions are really starting to come down. So one of the ways we've done that is I'm a huge fan of education over enforcement. And back during the Christmas holiday, the foundation had purchased some gift cards to allow the officers to give out, kind of during contacts with citizens, sometimes to do an education enforcement, community engagement aspect, instead of just writing a citation. And we did that with Starbucks and a couple other businesses. Well, Ms. Pachulo, during a coffee with the cop she hosted for us, wanted to get involved in that aspect. And so now, as we've moved past the holidays and getting more into the spring, she stepped forward and provided, I think, approximately thirty gift cards to the Tatchee Police Department that we're gonna utilize, starting a program in the next couple of days as our education over enforcement, giving officers an opportunity to recognize citizens who are either, you know, amenable to the education or to ones that are just doing outstanding things that they witness and can stop over and give them the opportunity to, you know, get a free meal at McDonald's for their perfect behavior in the community, which is, which is important. We can always write a lot of tickets, but we don't always have a good opportunity to make a first impression with a citizen within our community that may be life-changing or may have a positive benefit, you know, ten people down who they talk to. So that's kind of where we're going with this. So I want to read this certificate, and I'll ask Mary Ann to come up here and receive it, if you don't mind. So the Tatchee City Council would like to recognize Mary Ann Pachulo for her partnership with the Tatchee Police Department through donations of McDonald's gift cards to help our officers create positive encounters with residents and visitors. TPD has taken a focused and proactive stance on traffic enforcement in the city limits. The gift card donations will help our officers educate citizens about traffic issues and the need to adhere to the laws outlined in the California Code. Mary Ann also hosts events for public safety at her business and supports TPD's efforts to have a safe community for all. The Tatchee City Council thanks Mary Ann for her continued support of the Tatchee Police Department and dedication to public safety. Mary Ann, if you'd come up, I'd like to recognize you, please. Before I can, talk about the coffee with the cop when we had our first event there. It was an outstanding business and a place to have it, and she was very welcoming, which I appreciated. And while I was there, I got to run into the group of veterans that's there all the time. And they pulled me aside and they said, "You know, chief, we're here all the time. When you want to come back without your entourage, we really want to talk to you." And sure enough, I went back one day without my entourage, and I was there an hour. So it was a good visit. So, Mary Ann, if you'd like to come up, please. And this certificate is awarded to you. Thank you very much for all your help and assistance with us, and you can come up here.
Counsel, you wanna come up?
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
One more.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Am I able to say something?
You can.
Thank you for this recognition, chief. Just wanted to just mention that my son is in law enforcement. He's a California Highway Patrol for seven years. He works out of the Anla Valley Officer Office. And I'm very dedicated to not only helping the police department, but helping the community. And I appreciate this recognition. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Consent agenda. All items listed in the asterisk are considered to be routine and non-contribucial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. Stack recommendations are shown in caps. Do we have anybody from the audience who want to have anything removed from the consent item, consent agenda? Council?
Motion to approve as presented.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
Public comment. Do we have anybody from the audiences wants to address the council? Mr.? Do I have to call you Mr. Torres? Financial, financial director reports, item eight, RSi disbursements for bills from February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four through February twenty-seven. I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSi Petroleum, and Ms. Poggy will take over.
Okay, do I have any public comments from the peanut gallery here? Council?
No.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pogencourt?
Yes.
Three zero vote of recusal for Mayor Davies.
Okay, item nine, fiscal year and twenty twenty-three financial reports. Ma, welcome.
Mayor Davies, councilmembers. The fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three financial reports include the annual comprehensive financial report, the independent auditors' report on internal control and compliance, the report on the city's appropriations limit, and the statements of audit standards communication letter. We started the audit process back in May, two thousand twenty-three with our independent auditors, Van Lant and Van Cano LLP. That was for preliminary audit work, our interim audit. And then they returned in October to do their final audit work. And then we worked with them to produce our annual comprehensive financial report and issued that, those financial statements in December. City staff submitted this financial report to GFOA, that's the Government Finance Officers Association, for their excellence in financial reporting award. We've received that the five previous fiscal years, so we're hoping to get the sixth. Then we'll let you know if we get that award. With that, also With that, also want to point out that our auditors did not find any deficiency in internal controls, and their opinion was that this was a clean audit. And so I'm happy to turn it over to our auditor, Greg Frank Van Canell, for his presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. We finished the audit of the financial statements a while back and issued our final reports. Currently, we're still working on what's called the single audit, which is an audit of the city's federally funded expenditures, which is required by the feds, and that should be done in a couple of weeks, hopefully. But I first wanted to mention the, you know, an audit takes a lot of work from both parties, the city and from us, to get these reports issued, and the city staff did a tremendous job, and we're really grateful for the efforts they put in. Sometimes we show up to our clients and they're not even close to being ready, but you guys are doing an excellent job, so that's good. There's a few slides, but I'm going to blow through them pretty quick here. Just a reminder of the audit process. You mentioned the planning phase, which happened back in May, and this is really the, it's called a risk assessment process, where we determine whether you have sufficient internal controls in place and they're operating properly, and then we do further testing based on that risk assessment. And if we have encountered any, what we call material weaknesses in your, it's internal control over financial reporting, repairing this big hundred-and-some-page document, that's what we're looking at, and it's all focused on that. We didn't find, as you mentioned, we didn't find any material weaknesses, and the next phase is just, based on our risk assessment, is just getting in and diving into your, the balances and the transactions that are showing up in your financial statements. We do a lot of different types of tests. We confirm with outside parties some of your activity and balances, but we, our job is to do sufficient procedures to state our opinion, which is what we shoot for every year. And then he mentioned all the reports that we issued, and the main one is the report on the city's financial statements, and there's a lot of information in that document, including, some of it's developed by the city staff, well, all of it is, but we don't necessarily state our opinion on all of it. There's some sections that we don't audit, but the guts of the report is audited by our firm. For instance, you have a statistical section in the back of the document we don't audit that. It's got like ten-year trend information, if you're interested in reading that. He mentioned we've issued an unqualified opinion, which is clean opinion, and just a few highlights of the financial statements. You know, the net pension liability goes up and down every year depending on market conditions. It's calculated by actuaries. This year it went up three point three million, last year it went down a couple million. It's just kind of all over the place, but it's based on information that's a couple years old, so it's just a big estimate. And then, you know, your general fund had a good operating results in twenty-two, twenty-three at three point five million, increase in fund balance, and some of that was the ARPA money that came in, but you also had an increase in some of your taxes, this tax money. So we've issued a report on internal control and compliance, and that's a clean opinion. We wouldn't mention in that report if we ran into some small issues where you could strengthen your controls or maybe tweak the way you're doing things a little, which once in a while we'll make comments that, but they wouldn't show, it's only the material items that would show up in this report that could materially affect your financial statements. So anyway, there was a clean report this year. If you're not in compliance, materially not in compliance, for instance, with laws, regulations, contracts, it would show up here in this report also. Appropriations limit, I don't need to get into that. It's just something we have to do, state law, and the only time it would be an issue is if you were approaching your limit on how much you can spend of tax money, which you got a little ways to go, and it's kind of increases over the year, the limit, so. And then we issued a report to the city council, those charged with governance, governance required by audit standards. This is where we would disclose to you if we had all kinds of problems with the city management and the staff, disagreements, and just a rough audit, or anyway, there's nothing in that, that letter either, but that, like I mentioned, it was a great, great audit experience, great staff to work with. It does talk about estimates in the financial statements. There are some big, big amounts in there that are estimates. It's not set in concrete, but just if you ever want to read through that. So thank you to everybody for helping us get through this audit process, even the attorney. Any questions?
Do I open? Do we have any questions from the public on our audit? I see none, Council.
Phil? Just again, congratulations on a clean audit, no problems. We're in good financial health as a city. Not all cities can say that. And again, hopefully this will be another award winner that we're looking forward to. We're very proud of our finance department and everyone that's involved in that.
I'm just curious, how many people are on your team to do the audit?
There are three of us.
Wow, that's amazing. Wow.
My partner and I have been doing it for decades and...
It does make it easier, though.
We know how to come in and focus on the important stuff.
No.
We'll walk in and play, on new plays, it's like, oh, something's wrong here. Comes up really fast.
Wow, that's amazing.
I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate the staff, Ahmad and your crew, and Greg. Thank you for everything that you do, and you know, it's very important as running, as an elected official, that was one thing that was really, you know, that the budget is very, very important, you know, and I'm married to a, my woman.
Careful with that.
My wife was in accounting for many years, so if I don't understand something, she helps me understand the terminology, so I go through it and read it with her, and so I can get more understanding, you know. She just doesn't, you know, she doesn't make it, make it easier on me, so, but I appreciate everything, appreciate the staff, and I appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you.
All right. That's it, all right. Have a good night, sir.
Applause like nothing.
That's funny.
Sir?
Mayor Davies, council members. The item before you is to hold a public hearing regarding the unmet transit needs within the city.
So we're going to...
Open the hearings.
Yeah, we're going to, we need to open a hearing, hearing for, okay. Sorry, conduct a public hearing to receive public testimony concerning the transit needs within the city. The city attached to provide the transit service named Dial-A-Ride through current regional transit. The average cost per rider from twenty-two, twenty-three was seventy-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. So the hearing is...
We published a notice and attachment news on January thirty-first, and we have not received any correspondence.
Okay. Staff report, Ahmad.
Thank you. Just to give some statistics for the Dial-A-Ride transit service. So when we compare fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three to the previous year, twenty-one, twenty-two, our ridership increased one point seven percent. However, the total cost also increased by three percent. This brought our ridership numbers up to three thousand four hundred and seven, however, that's significantly lower than the pre-COVID total of five thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine, four years prior to that. The TDA requires the city to meet a ten percent fare box ratio, so that's taking the fare box revenues and dividing by this total expenses. That fare box ratio for the city was one point four six percent. The city traditionally has struggled to meet that ten percent ratio. However, this year, due to COVID again, the state suspended those requirements and actually allowed the city to use some COVID funding to satisfy that ten percent requirement. By satisfying that ten percent requirement, the city can receive up to eight hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in our current fiscal year for funding related to our transit operations as well as some streets and roads funding. We continue to try to promote the transit service. We've sent out incentives in our water bills. We created new brochures, displays, and increased our social media advertising, and continue to look for ways to promote the service. And again, the city's required to hold this public hearing and adopt a resolution each year showing that there are no unmet transit needs. This will allow us to be eligible for funding for next fiscal year, twenty-four, twenty-five, to cover our transit operations as well as additional funding for streets and roads. So with that, staff recommends that you receive public comment, close the public hearing, and adopt the resolution finding that there are no unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet within the city.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from the public that'd like to make any comments? Okay. Like to close the hearing. We need to adopt a resolution finding that there are no unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet within the city. Need a motion?
I'll move.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Volunport?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you, sir. Development Services Director Reports.
Good evening. They're both, their lights on. Okay. Well, I'll plug them up. Good evening. The item before you tonight is the Brentwood pedestrian facilities project, ready to award that project. So hopefully you guys recall, shoot, I don't know, about six months ago, we had prepared this project for bid, went out to bid and hit an unpleasant bidding atmosphere, which is something I've talked to you guys about on a number of occasions, and the project came in a couple hundred thousand dollars over the available grant funds that we have for this project. As a reminder, this is Transportation Development Act Article III money, which is akin, actually, to the money that is utilized for the Dial-A-Ride service, but different branch, but similar funding source. Anyway, so what we told you at that time is we asked for permission to go back and revision, re-scope the project. We thought we had some opportunities to reduce the scope of the project and still deliver the heart of the project, which is pedestrian facilities on Brentwood, in a, you know, a little less construction, but still get the primary pedestrian corridor east-west, particularly for school traffic, was the aim of the project. And so we've done that, and we went back to bid, and advertising began on January twenty-sixth, and advertising closed, or bids were received on the twenty-seventh. We got a much better bidding atmosphere. We've got quite a few bidders, as you can see there from the staff report, and we undertook a responsiveness review in compliance with the Public Contract Code and determined that the bid received from SenCal Construction, who we used before, first sidewalk projects of this nature here in the city, was responsive. So on a fiscal level, I think I told you last time that I thought that if we went back and retooled the project, that we could, we could deliver the project for the grant project plus up to a hundred thousand dollars in additional funds. So the grant is worth about two hundred and eighty-four thousand, and so we actually think we can do a little better than that now that we got the bidding information. We think we can deliver the entire project for three hundred and sixty thousand, which requires approximately seventy-five thousand dollars in Measure S funding to round the project out. So that's good news, and we therefore recommend that you award the Brentwood pedestrian facilities project, base bid plus all additives, to SenCal Construction, the amount of two hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars, and authorize the city manager to approve any necessary change orders up to a maximum of ten percent of the original contract for twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That concludes my report.
Do we have any comments for the public on this item? Council?
How long will the project take, and when do you plan on starting?
It's about a four-month project. If you all award tonight, we'll send the contracts out tomorrow. We typically allot about two to three weeks for the contractor to execute those contracts. So we'll be looking to have a kickoff meeting with the contractor before the month is out and hopefully completed by about midsummer, perhaps a little earlier. Kind of depends on whether it's going to be the big item, so.
So have all the property owners along the way been notified? We've got this in the works, and what was the response?
Yeah. No, you, we have a procedure in which we'll seek out property owners, particularly in a project like this where we're going to affect people's driveways. We'll seek a right of entry, which is an actual signed document that speaks to, hey, we're going to come through, we're going to do this work, and we're going to put your driveway back, and we seek their signature so there's clarity. So yes, all positive. We received no negative comments. We always get a few, like, how are you going to do this, and how inconvenient is it going to be for me, but no negative comments.
Thank you.
It's going to be on both sides, correct?
No, so that was the major re-scoping effort.
Okay.
We're going to concentrate on one side. We will be making improvements on both sides of the street, but we are focused on getting a single sidewalk pedestrian corridor and then making sure that we have ramps at each corner. So if you're coming at this street from north or south, you'll be able to safely get to the side where we place the single side sidewalk.
Okay, I know it's Curry to the east, or how is it to the west?
I think we get all the way, it's depicted here, I think that's Kelton? Oakwood. Okay, yeah.
Oakwood, okay, all right. And what, which side of the road are you going to do? Do you know?
I think we're doing the north.
South.
The long guy up there.
Always the south. They had no with the north. They don't like north for whatever reason.
That'll teach me to take a stab at it. Hey, you had a fifty-fifty chance.
That's right, that's right.
So I have no other comments, so we need to make a motion, somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept it as proposed.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Power?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Volunport?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
Four zero vote, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane. City Manager Reports.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Here. Councilmember Reports. Phil?
Not this evening.
Okay.
Just lots of things going on with potholes. Again, always I'm a, must be the pothole queen, I don't know, but, and also the Valley Park way is coming along, you know, I try to look while I'm driving, but I probably shouldn't, but it looks like it's progressing, and of course, weather has a lot to do with it, but we see some improvement there, so, yeah.
I was going to say, the Valley Park looks great. I've gotten lots of comments from people who live in that area that I used to sell real estate to, they're very, very excited about the park.
So this last week, I was up in Sacramento, meeting with some assemblymen and senators for Chevron, not the city, but they wanted me, a lot of them understood that I was the mayor, so I had a lot of positive comments that a mayor is working for a distributor, so that was kind of cool. And then we got to meet with Senator Shannon Grove, got invited to her office, and it was kind of a breath of fresh air, meeting with all these Democratic assemblymen all day, and so it was kind of a nice way to end the day, meeting with Senator Grove, and she always has a lot of positive things to say about her city, and she was very forthcoming about the climbing lanes that we're working on, and she's been a part of that, and just real positive, and I don't want to live in Sacramento, I'll just stay right here in Tatchee. With that being said, we are going to close the meeting. We'll adjourn. Thank you.